It's great to see everyone has the ability to spend their Saturday with us on this topic. I'd also like to make an acknowledgement that we are hosting this meeting on the traditional territories of the Coast Alborash people. So today's town hall is going to be hosted by myself, Alistair McGregor, and a member of parliament for Couch Malhaat Langford, and my wonderful neighbour to the south, Randall Garrison, who is now a Squamal Santasouk. We also have a wonderful representative from Fairboat Canada, Terry Danz Benning, and they are an organisation which has been doing a lot of work right across the country to make people informed of what electoral reform really means. A few housekeeping notes: the washrooms are down the hall that way, and we also have a stand up there. You'll notice that in front of everyone, we have placed sort of a feedback form. Now, this is really important because this town hall is really about consulting you, about getting your feedback. Because one of my main goals to come from this is to compile a report, and I need to have feedback from my constituents in order to do that. And then, once I get that, I'm going to compile it into a report, and that's going to be one of the many documents that are being submitted to the Special Committee on Electoral Reform, which has been doing a lot of work over the summer and is continuing during this summer. So, I'm just going to move on to the agenda for tonight. So, we have a few things that we're going to go over. I'm going to be explaining a little bit about how our current system works, and sort of going over what the timeline is for the committee, what kind of stages the committee needs to go through, and also the timeline that Elections Canada needs to work with. Because if there are going to be any reform changes proposed and implemented, Elections Canada needs to have a minimum amount of time to get those implemented in time for the 2019 election. You know, a lot of Canadians are going to have to be educated on how they do voting system, if any, that we think is going to work, and so on. And then, I'm going to turn it over to Randall, who's going to talk a little bit about some of the alternatives that exist, some of the main ones that are being proposed. And we'll also have some feedback from Terry on some of the work that Fairboat Canada has been doing. And then, I'm going to put a little plug in for my private members' bill, C279, because it does amend the Canada Elections Act to finally put a length on the limit, a limit on the length of elections. We can all remember the 78-day marathon that we experienced last year, and I found out to my surprise, there is no limit on the length of elections in Canada. So, I think if we put a hard cap on that, we can do some good. So, just moving on. So, first past the post. That's the system that it's commonly known by, but it's actually the single-member plurality. It has been used in every Canadian federal election since Confederation, and it was even used before that. It's a system that is also used by the United Kingdom and the United States. So, every province is allocated a number of ridings, the electoral districts. Those are given according to a formula that's set out in the Constitution, but they can also be updated from time to time to reflect the changing nature of our population and demographics. The important thing to realise is that Canada's Constitution does not contain any specific reference to what our voting system should be. It only states the proportionate rules that exist between provinces, and, you know, explains things that, like, no province can have a fewer number of seats than it does senators. But, other than that, it is Parliament's right and complete jurisdiction to change the voting system. That is something that is set out in the Constitution and that's allowed. It is the Canada Elections Act which is the main statute, and the main reference in that act basically instructs the returning officer to award the seat to the candidate who has the highest number of votes. And, you know, first past the post is a little bit of a misnomer, because it's indicating that you just have, you have to reach some kind of a finish line. Well, that's not really true. All you have to do in first past the post with a single-member plurality is get ahead of second place. That's it. And so, you can often, you will often see seats that elect members, some seats elect members of parliament with close to 30% of the vote, because all of their competitors had less than that. There are other acts of parliament that exist, so the Electoral Boundaries Readjustment Act and the Parliament of Canada Act. But as I said, the Canada Elections Act is the main statute, so if the government does decide to proceed with reform, that is the one that will be adjusted. So, our current system, it has received a lot of negative press, and, you know, there are some reasons why we should be reforming it. But I thought I would also talk about some of the strengths of our current system. Now, it certainly does favour the installation of majority governments to carry out a strong legislative agenda. You can't argue that the Liberals were elected certainly last year. Governments that are elected under this system tend to get majorities, and when they do, they tend to be able to carry out their mandate with little obstruction, because it is basically an elective dictatorship. It is easily understood. This is probably the simplest system for voters. You know, it's one vote for one person in one electoral district. And there's a very clear geographical link between constituents and the federal representative who represents them. Results are often counted very quickly. We saw that in the last election where the news networks were basically able to predict a majority government before British Columbia had even stopped voting. That's something British Columbians were not too happy with. I think most of us would prefer that we kept the results secret until we've actually had our turn to vote. Popular governments can be given a new mandate very easily. They can continue their rule, but they can also be tossed out really quickly. So, you look back to 1984, when the Trudeau Liberals were tossed out by Brian Mulroney; 1993, when Jean Chrétien basically decimated the progressive Conservatives; and of course, in 2015, when the Liberals leapfrogged from third place into first. One of the, some of the problems that exist with this system, though, is that, you know, with the one vote that you have, you are basically trying to make three choices. You are trying to elect the member of parliament that you think would represent you best. You're having to put thought into what party you would like to lead nationally. But also, there's also a consideration, this is probably the biggest one, of the leadership of that party. Because of course, leaders do have a great deal of influence on their parties and sort of the agenda they want to set out. The other thing that you have to recognise is the fact that Canada has held 22 elections since 1945, and nine of them actually have resulted in minority parliaments. So, we do look at this system often for the strong majorities that it does produce, but it is easy to forget that nine out of 22 have resulted in minorities' parliaments. And because our minority parliaments, we only have to look at the period between 2004 and 2011, often they are fraught with danger, really kind of unstable, not really sure whether the government's going to fall one week or the next. And there can be some pretty high-end gamesmanship between the parties to see who's got the advantage. So, going into a little bit more detail, you know, one of the reasons why we are looking at reform in the first place is I wanted to go over some of the main reasons that are wrong with first past the post. So, it does lead to distorted electoral outcomes. You only need to look at the last two elections, where 39% of the vote ended up giving the party in power 100% of the power. They will listen to the opposition, and they will certainly take our considered arguments. But at the end of the day, if the Cabinet wants its way, it has the votes to do it. And it has that power until the end of its mandate. And there's really nothing we can do about it. It certainly sways a public opinion, can influence the government, but when it commands that kind of power in the House with only 39% of the vote, that is certainly one of the main reasons we have seen. The other thing, too, is that the allocation of the seats does not, it does not really reflect the relative shares of the votes cast. So, in 2015, it took 38,000 votes to elect each Liberal member of parliament; 57,000 votes for each Conservative; 79,000 for each New Democrat; 82,000 for the Bloc of Ecuador. And of course, the most egregious example is that just under 603,000 Canadians who voted Green in the last election were voted with precisely one member of parliament. And if you, you see the turnout, so the Liberals do have 54% of the seats with 39% of the vote, and so on. There have been previous examples of massive distortions. If you go back to the 1993 federal election, the Conservatives captured only two seats despite getting 16% of the vote. In that same election, the Bloc of Ecuador surged to 54 seats with less than 13.5% of the vote. So, they actually captured less of the popular vote in the Conservatives, but got 52 more seats than them. So, it is quite, it can lead to some very crazy results. The other thing, too, if you look at number two, it does generally contribute to lower voter turnout. 2015 was certainly an exception. We did see 68% turnout. But the past quarter century has seen a downward trend in Canadians coming up to the polls. In the six elections that we've had since the year 2000, four of them have been the lowest turnouts in Canadian history. It tends to lead to a general lack of political interest, especially if you, if you live in a riding which has always been held by one party and you don't agree with that party's views. You may not feel that your vote counts. Even if you do head to the poll, there's a general lack of enthusiasm, because you believe that your vote is not actually going to contribute to anything. No matter what you do, no matter how hard you get your friends up to the poll, the results seem to always be predetermined in certain ridings. You can certainly contribute to regional tensions. If you look at the electoral map of Canada and how it's coloured, you can get some parties which falsely claim to represent certain regions of Canada. So, right now, we have all 32 seats in Atlantic Canada represented by the Liberal Party. Well, when you go west, you see Saskatchewan and Alberta, they're coloured blue. But this is in spite of the fact that there were a lot of people from other parties who voted, but they didn't get any, any representation in those areas. It can lead to pitting province against province, region against region. So, you can get some members of parliament saying, "Well, we represent the West, and this is the way that the West wants", and they do that despite the fact. So, the Conservatives, for example, represent 29 out of 34 seats in Alberta, and they got that with 59% of the vote. So, they sometimes tend to claim the interests of Alberta and Saskatchewan despite receiving 59% of the vote. And it's the same in Atlantic Canada, because the Liberals there got all of the seats with about 65% of the vote. So, that's one of the things, when you're pitting region against region and you need to have some leadership which sort of takes on these big national issues, that's one of the problems with our system. It can lead to fewer women being elected, because often when you are getting candidates to try and run for party nominations, they tend to try, voters in the party nominations try to select people who they consider as safe candidates. So, we will see less women in the system, less people who are visible minorities, and so on and so forth. And you, you need to only look at our current parliament. And the current House of Commons has 247 men and only 88 women. And I'm proud that my caucus has 18 out of 44 women, but it certainly is an area where all parties need to do work. And I firmly believe that if we had a different system, we would see some changes. And of course, with the lower system approval levels, there is, there are tons of scholarly articles out there that show that people who live in areas where they have some form of proportional representation, where they feel that their vote is actually going to count towards something, where they feel that they actually have a representative in the parliament who is putting forward their views, there is much greater voter satisfaction with those systems than there is with ours. And this is a graphic that the Broadbent Institute put together, just to show you that, you know, in the last election, when you tally up all of the ridings together and you look at all the votes that weren't successful in electing a member of parliament, they came to work to the tally of 9 million votes, more than the populations of Alberta, Saskatchewan, and Manitoba, and the Atlantic provinces combined. So, those people, those 9 million Canadians, their votes did not count at all going towards electing a member of parliament. And I, this is certainly one of the biggest criticisms we've seen of our current system. This is the electoral reform timeline that we're looking at. So, June 2016, through the hard work of our colleague Nathan Cullen, the House of Commons adopted a motion to form a special committee on electoral reform. And, you know, kudos to the Liberal Government, they did give up the majority on that committee. Most committee structures, the government does hold a majority on it, it has a majority in the House. So, we have had five Liberals, three Conservatives, two New Democrats, one Green and one Bloc. And those people have given up their summers in the ridings with their constituents to do this work over the summer and to continue over the fall. By December 1st, that committee must report back to parliament on its recommendations. And after that point, it will be entirely within the Liberal Government's hands. They can totally choose whether to take those recommendations or ignore them, or not proceed at all. We expect to see some kind of a legislative path and plan presented by April of next year, because by June of next year, Elections Canada needs to have that new law in place to begin the process for going through reform. So, by the fall of next year, that's when Elections Canada would start to implement anything. It's a long process, because of course, you're going to have to have the Electoral Boundary Commission involved to do any possible boundary changes, and there's going to be a lot of education involved with Canadians. And by April 2019, of course, that's when the main information will be going on. And then, you know, October 2019, three years from next month, that's when we will be going back to the polls. So, at this point, I'm going to hand the mic over to my colleague Randall, and Randall is going to go over some of the alternatives that exist out there, just to give you an idea about how they exist.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. You can tell about the short straw. Actually, we had another presenter. So, yesterday, we found out that they had the time to receive you to be able to be here, so you'll bear with me working on somebody else's material on this. First, I want to say, I want to acknowledge the presence of Sherry Lucrens, former councillor and conservative candidate in the last election. Thanks for being here, Sherry. This is not a partisan political meeting, nor is it a meeting that's selling a particular product. We're here to listen.
Randall, can you keep the mic at your mouth and not turn your head, please? You're superior back here.
Okay, thanks. So, we're here to listen to what you have to say, and obviously, some of us have preferences that are strong. But really, the most important part is the report that we'll present to the committee. When Alistair and I talked about this last August, we had no way of knowing what we'd be competing with. We didn't know that the committee was actually going to travel. They will be here next week. And of course, we couldn't know that the royal visit would be taking place today, there'd be thousands of people downtown. So, thanks for coming here, given your choices. We're pretty dedicated. The other thing I would say is, of course, Alistair and I decided to do this together, because the last redistribution split the West Shore. And so, I know we have people all across the region here today, because this was probably the one you could get to. But it was very hard. I argued quite strongly that the West Shore should not be split in the redistribution. And so, Alistair and I have tried to do a number of things cooperatively, not just because we're New Democrats, but because it's quite an artificial division here. And the other, there are some other issues that we're not really talking about this afternoon that aren't changes to the system as it stands. One of those Alistair raised is the question of release of results, and I feel quite strongly about this. Supreme Court ruled that once ballots were counted, you could not restrict their release. And so, there is an alternative, and that is, hold the count until we finish voting. So, it means some people have to stay up very late, and I don't care about that. They can have their party very late. Everyone will tell you who worked in polling places that there was a very large impact of having the national media declare Liberals had already won the election, both in terms of discouraging people from voting and changing the way some people voted, having already heard results. So, I think that there is the possibility we can get the counts held until we finish voting, and that would probably stand up to a Supreme Court challenge. Mandatory voting, so there's a lot of debate about whether voting should be mandatory. And in systems like Australia where it is, the turnout is higher. And so, a lot of debate, we're not talking about that one today. And the voting age. There's a lot of evidence that a lower voting age that we have actually encourages turnout and continues throughout people's lives. So, those are some issues the committee may choose to deal with, but they're not really about the electoral system. So, now I'm stuck. That was all my material. I'm stuck going through these PowerPoints. I'm going to ask Alistair to help me out. I talked for 20 years, and I'm very proud to say I never, ever used a PowerPoint. So... There's a lot of discussion of alternative vote or ranked ballot. And so, quickly, what is alternative vote or ranked ballot? It's a preferential system. So, it asks voters, rather than to make an X to mark 1, 2, 3, 4, whatever order you like the candidate is in. And so, voters have, it says on the PowerPoint, "One vote". I don't actually know if that's true. You get to vote as many as you like, what you rank them. And the candidate wins who has the most first and second choices. Unless someone gets an outright majority, then you drop the bottom person and look at their second choices of those ballots, and you continue that until someone has 50%. So, it's not proportional, in the sense that parties don't get represented by their percentage of the vote. And again, the PowerPoint says, parties can receive 39% of the vote and the majority. They can actually receive 10%, 5%. The system has no overrounding on what it takes to win an election. It is true that ranked ballots or alternative votes, if a party gets 40%, they do usually win the election. So, 40%, just the way the mechanics of ranking work usually produces a majority government. But you can have all kinds of other very strange outcomes from that. The advantage that people who like ranked ballot is that the person who wins is at least the first and second choice of a majority of people. So, that's what people think is most important. I kind of want to read quickly something. So, let's go to proportional representation, and I do want to say some things about it, which are not PowerPoint. Proportional representation does not have to be complicated, although some proportional systems are very complicated. But they don't have to be. And proportional representation does not have to be Italy or Israel. There are numerous, literally dozens of other countries who use proportional systems and do not have the negative aspects that people always point to, instability and fractured politics of Italy and Israel. And I would argue, I'm a recovering political scientist, I would argue that it's the nature of politics in those two countries that makes things very fractious, not the nature of their electoral system, when you have dozens of other examples where that doesn't happen. But opponents of proportional like to talk about Israel. I'd like to talk, I'd like to talk about Italy. So, the idea behind proportional representation is that if a party gets 30% of the vote, then it ought to get something roughly equivalent to that in the House of Commons. So, 30% of the vote ought to get you about the 30% of the seats. So, that's perceived as something that would be more fair than what we have, and Alistair's already gone through some of the unfairness. Systems which use proportional representation by and large find higher turnouts, more cooperation among parties, and I guess what most political scientists would call higher-level conversations about policy. So, to win votes, you have to convince voters that your programme is good, not that you're the most likely to win. And the first past the post system encourages people to campaign by saying, "I'm most likely to win. I'm your least evil choice", right? Proportional representation makes parties say, "This is what I'm for, and if you're for that, you should vote for my party". So, Alistair, I don't know where we are on this yet. It eliminates wasted votes. So, the idea of wasted votes, Alistair's already gone through, but my favourite is New Brunswick. So, in this past election in New Brunswick, the Liberals got, I wrote down somewhere, I'm not sure where I wrote it, 52% of the vote. Other parties got 48, and the Liberals got all 10 seats. Right? So, 48% of voters wasted their votes in that sense. They got nothing out of it. So, 10 to 0 out of 52% of 48. That's probably the most egregious example right now. People are pointing to the current parliament and saying it's distorted, but the last two parliaments have been almost identically distorted. So, the Harbour Government achieved a majority of about the same size, with about the same vote that the Liberals have done. So, we have two in a row where parties have sole power in parliament. Winner takes all produces that false majority that we're all, I think, concerned about. There's a great chart that's going to come up here that I saw yesterday for the first time, and I'll let you look at it. I don't know how they did it. Took me a little while trying to figure out how they did this. But it shows you roughly what would happen under most proportional systems. And that is that the Liberals would have gotten, if their vote matched their seats, about 45 fewer seats, we would not have a majority government. The Conservatives would have about seven more seats. The NDP would have 22, Greens would have five, and other parties would have 10. I think that's right, although my colours are... You got the idea. So, we would not have a majority government, and that's because of the distortion of the first past the post.
Randall? Did you mean 22 more?
More.
Yeah. You didn't say more, but you mean 22 more.
Additional seats.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is about one party. The party which benefited from just the way things counted in first past the post, ended up with 45 extra seats, more than people actually voted for. So, what you get is a fairer system. All proportional representation systems elect more women. Sorry.
I'm just writing the chart. What proportional representation system was that based on?
That's what I was trying to figure out. I said to you, I couldn't quite determine what they'd done.
Yeah.
Terry will talk more about systems, but at least I'm working with my surprise presentation here.
This chart sort of illustrates my question. How is popular vote distributed across Canada? Because I think the Green vote represents all of Canada, but the Bloc vote is going to be all in Quebec.
True.
So, how would the votes be like if we had all the Democrats come from the island, and that's going to have bumped up for all of Canada? How many of the Democrats were, you know, were voting for? And that distortion shows up also in Quebec and Ontario, actually forming government no matter what the rest. You said the population is less, you know, the population, the number of votes that were wasted is equal to the population of Alberta, blah, blah, blah. But we're going to be able to vote anyways, because the seats assigned in Quebec and Ontario are so much greater. So, it's kind of complicated. My question would be, right, it's time to discuss. How does that popular vote, does it stay in the province where you're heard, or is it spread across Canada?
Okay, we'll set that aside for right now. But you raised a point that's not often dealt with, and that is that proportional also makes the parties internally more representative. And so, you're quite right that some parties are more heavily, their seats they win are more heavily weighted to one region or another. So, if you look at the Democrats right now, we have no Atlantic members. Okay, so where is that voice in our caucus? And that's a difficulty that we face and the Conservatives face right now. So, proportional also helps correct within parties' representation. Helps close the gap between rich and poor. I have no idea where that point came from. I have no idea where that point came from. And I'm not sure it could be demonstrated, but it's up there. But it is true that all the systems elect more women and they elect more members of previously underrepresented groups. It depends on which system of PR that you adopt, how that exactly functions. But when you look at all the systems that use it, they all produce that same outcome. A better and more representative parliament in terms of the population. Okay, last, I hope it lasts for me. I only saw this. Then the other last set of benefits. It is true, it's called a more engaging system, that when you look at systems that use this, the public is more engaged in the actual election than they tend to be in first past the post systems. That results in higher turnouts, and it helps address the problem of alienation of groups that feel that they're left out of the political system. All the PR systems result in higher turnout, depending on the system, between five and seven percent higher on the average. And when there's, political scientists have done surveys of satisfaction with their political system, PR systems get much higher ranking from the public that actually uses them. The example, firstly that I know is New Zealand, because I spent a fair bit of time there, where the public used an initiative process to get proportional representation, and all political parties opposed it. All political parties opposed it. And then, after it was brought in and was used for, I think it was three elections, they conducted a referendum on whether people wanted to go back. And there was a resounding no. So it's very interesting, not all countries have parties been in favor of proportional representation because sometimes people like to be the one that gets the majority and gets to govern without paying attention to a large section of the population. So I'm gonna now turn it over to Terry, who knows way more about this than I do. I just wanna finish up. Terry's from Fairvote Canada, and I think you'll see why we invited her to participate in this meeting.
No PowerPoint required. Okay, I'm gonna be taking a slightly different tack. I'm honored to be here today, and what I would like to do is to start by sharing some of my own personal reasons about why I've become a champion for electoral reform, and also some highlights from the submission that Fairvote Canada has made to this parliamentary committee. And I don't know, how many people here know about Fairvote Canada? Hands up. Okay, so some of you. I'm impressed by the fact it's a national organization, ninety-nine percent volunteer-driven. We have one and a half staff members in Toronto, and we have sixty-six thousand people now who've signed our Declaration of Voter Rights and forty chapters and teams across Canada. And I'm a member of the Capital Region. So it's an exciting organization to work with. First, a disclaimer, unlike what Randall implied, I am not an expert on electoral reform, I'm not an MP. I'm an ordinary voter. I'm a citizen, I'm an environmentalist, I'm a woman, and I'm a voter who cares deeply about democracy and civil discourse in our country. How many of you can relate to one of those labels? Okay, so we're all in this together, right? I grew up in the sixties in Ontario, and I was actively involved in the movements for peace, for women's rights, and racial equality, as I'm sure, again, some of you were judging from some gray hairs here. Eventually, though, I had to earn a living, and I spent most of my working life in the public sector as an adult educator, and ended my career as Vice President Academic of Fleming College in Peterborough. And as such, I couldn't be involved officially in politics, you know, when you're in the public service. And in fact, after my sixties activism, I became quite cynical. I remember there were a couple of decades where I just thought, "What's the point?" And it wasn't really until I retired ten years ago and moved out here to Victoria with my husband, that all of a sudden, a new life began. I could speak what I believed, I could act what I felt was right, and it's been rejuvenating for me. I vote, when I vote, I vote for the best, most qualified candidate, not always the same party. I voted strategically in the last election to ensure that the incumbent government was not re-elected, but I didn't like that pressure of feeling that I had to vote strategically. And I'm sure some of you feel the same way. As both Alistair and Randall have pointed out, when I saw the election results and realized that nine million voters were not able to elect someone to represent their views, that did not make me feel good. You know, to me, that's a false majority, be it conservative or liberal. I'm happy, though. The one thing I was happy about was that I saw sixty-three percent of the voters chose parties who were campaigning on, "Let's make 2015 the last election under first past the post." So that was the good news. And it's partly why I got more involved in Fairvote Canada, and I became friends with Wendy Bergerud. Does anybody here remember Wendy? Some. She was an amazing champion in B.C. She was on the B.C. Citizens Assembly. And unfortunately, she died of cancer last March in her early sixties. And before she died, she asked me, you know, she said, "Get involved, we need more people." And so the entire chapter has gotten involved, and we're all now carrying her baton. So why do I wake up at night worrying about electoral reform? And I am a worry boy. I know. There are three reasons. The first is climate change. And it remains my biggest worry. Fossil fuel expansion, one-point-five-degree rise in global warming do not mix. It's like oil and water. And the OECD regularly ranks Canada still at the bottom of the barrel when it comes to about climate performance. And I think the thing that's drawn me to electoral reform the most is the fact that I'm getting tired and getting dizzy of the constant struggles. You know, first, we had Enbridge. And it's like that game, you know, Jack in the Box. Anybody remember that game as a kid? You have this box and your jack pops up, and you have to hit the lid to get him to go down. So we think perhaps Enbridge, Jack's back in the box. Then we have Kinder Morgan pop up. We have most of B.C.'s mayors saying, "No way." Two-thirds of B.C. voters, when they're surveyed in public opinion polls, have said, "Uh-uh." Who's listening? We have LNG proposals, one right just to our north, that are starting to mushroom. And we mobilize once again to slam that lid. And my last example is sightseeing, which has become one of my real concerns. If it proceeds, it is gonna cost every one of you in this room thousands of extra dollars on your hydro bill. It's a nine-billion-dollar project, B.C.'s largest infrastructure project ever. It's gonna flood the farmland that could feed a million people and infringe once again on First Nation rights. And I don't know about you, but these kinds of issues keep popping up, and I am getting fed up with that. How do we stop more floods, droughts, and fracking-induced earthquakes? I truly do not think it is through using our current system. And what gets me encouraged, what helps me go back to sleep, is when I imagine that slide that Randall put up. When I imagine a House of Commons with more NDPers in it, more Greens in it, and a balance of Conservatives and Liberals. You know, if you had a House composed of that kind of a breakdown, there'd be more negotiation, more compromise, and more dialogue. And that's what I think we need, and that's why I'm so keen to see a change. The other thing that helps me sleep is, as I've studied this whole issue for the last couple of years, there are ninety countries in the world now using PR. We are the exception. You know, the UK, Canada, the U.S., and there's one other. You know, we're standing out as kind of landowners. And the countries that use it are doing better, significantly better on climate change. Of the thirty-five strongest democracies in the world, twenty-five are using PR. And they are responsible for a shrinking share of global carbon emissions, and they score six points higher on Yale University's Environmental Performance Index. So that's some hard data. So if we had a system of governance like they do, I think we would find that all of our voices would be better represented. We need a longer-term solution, not a short-term crisis mentality. And that, to me, is the way we're gonna keep Jack in the Box. Secondly, as a woman, just quickly, only twenty-six percent of our MPs are women. And that is shocking. Did you know that Canada is sixty-second in the world? Well behind Angola, Belarus, South Sudan, and Afghanistan in terms of the number of women holding electoral office at the national level. And you know, when I think of the last election, my heart goes out to all those women who fought so hard only to lose. But under PR, what we are seeing is that women fare noticeably better, and they're not penalized for working with a smaller party, which many of them choose to do. Dr. Joanna Everett, she's the Dean of Arts at the University of New Brunswick, and she has said that if we were to institute a proportional system now, the number of women that would be elected in the next election would jump by ten percent. If we do nothing, if we stick with what we've got, it will be one hundred years before we have gender parity. And I don't know about you, but I'm not to wait that long. And the problem is, you know, under first past the post, you only get to vote for one person in a riding, and that person, sorry, Randall and Alistair, tends to be white and tends to be male. So it's in the interest of parties to work together on a proportional system where you could have a team, you know, of several candidates with an open ballot so that people could choose the mix, and those MPs would work together. And the last thing about women and PR is that it does involve more consensus building, more compromise. And I think these are qualities that many women are attracted to as opposed to the aggressive one-upmanship of first past the post. I think that we are drawn to a give-and-take model rather than a winner-take-all. When I look at Question Period, I shudder. Right? Lastly, as a woman of faith, and that's not just because I'm a member of the Squamal United, I'm drawn to a positive vision of the future, not a culture of fear and division. I mean, how many here enjoy turning on the U.S. News at night? I mean, I watch that, and I sometimes say to my husband, who of course controls the remote, "Turn it off, I can't stand it." And, you know, the reality is, the U.S. operates under first past the post, and it is awful, the kind of debate that's going on there. And I think it's all about fear, and fear is a terrible motivator. We're not immune. I think we saw references in the last election to barbaric cultural practices. Snitch lines, we saw Rob Ford in Toronto. I mean, these things happen in Canada too, but fortunately, we voted against that. And again, what helps me go to sleep at night is watching this parliamentary committee. I've been watching nearly every session, they've had at least twenty-three. It's on CPAC. You can go on and look at some of the digital archives. And that committee is an all-party committee, and they have worked really well together. They brought in fifty witnesses from all around the world, countries that are using PR, that have spoke honestly, you know, about how it's working and what are the pros, what are the cons. And there's been friendly debate. I mean, it is nothing like Question Period. And through that process, I've also learned that Canada has had thirteen separate electoral processes since 1977. Like, this is not a new thing for Canada. And most of them were citizen-led, at both the national level and also provincial level, including B.C., as most of you know, Ontario, Quebec, Manitoba, New Brunswick, and PEI this October. And do you know what each one of those processes ended up recommending? Anybody wanna hazard a guess? Did they recommend sticking with the existing system or changing to a more proportional law? Proportional. One hundred percent of those processes. And so my feeling is, why can we not say yes to all that extensive homework? We don't need a referendum. And I know that might be a controversial one, and I've got a list of reasons why I don't think we need one. I think it's a question of basic human rights, giving sixty-one percent of voters the right to have someone who represents their point of view in parliament. We didn't hold a referendum on giving women the right to vote. So just to end up, on Fairvote's position, you can Google FairvoteCanada.ca, and you will see that we support the five principles that our Minister of Democratic Institutions has put forward. Namely, we need a system that is effective and legitimate, engages you, engages all voters, it's accessible and inclusive, has integrity, and guarantees local representation. And we think a proportional system would meet those criteria. We may have to rank our priorities, like when you look at those four, five values, it's hard to get the perfect system that meets all five equally. So for me, when I thought about it, I thought top of my list is inclusiveness. I wanna make sure that every vote counts. I wanna make sure voters are engaged, and I want local representation. So I encourage you to think about, what would your list look like? People have asked me whether Fairvote Canada endorses one model of proportional representation. We don't. We are multi-partisan, and in our brief to the committee, what we have identified is three different models, broad models of PR. The first one I'm sure you've heard about is called mixed-member proportional. It was recommended by the National Law Commission in Canada in 2004, and it's used in many jurisdictions like Germany and New Zealand. The second one, anybody from B.C. will remember, is called single-transferable vote, or STV, recommended by our assembly. It was approved by fifty-eight percent of voters in B.C. in 2005 in seventy-seven out of seventy-nine ridings, but for various political reasons. You know, the bar was raised and it eventually failed. And the third model that you may not have heard about, and it's been due to the work of this parliamentary committee and others, is a new hybrid called rural-urban proportional. And it combines elements of mixed-member proportional and single-transferable vote. It tries to take into account the needs of rural ridings, you know, like Nathan Cullen's riding is the size of Poland. So if you were to say, "Well, we have to expand, double it, I mean, it's too big." So this new model takes into account the size of rural ridings, but allows more urban areas to be grouped together so that you could choose a team of MPs and then have a top-up mechanism through a regional list. So it was developed by a former electoral officer, Jean-Pierre... So it was developed by a former electoral officer, Jean Pierre Kingsley, and it's been embellished since. So take a look or flyers at the Fair Vote Canada table on each of these three models. My main conclusion is that it's not up to me, and it's not up to you to decide which of, you know, it is complex. But I am certain that we can have a made-in-Canada version of proportional representation. Our bottom line, as Randall said, is that we've got to choose a proportional system, though, that does not just use ranked ballots in single-member districts, that alternative vote model. Because for me, anyway, I don't want to have my second or third-choice candidate. I want to have my first choice. And that model would tend to reward big centrist parties. The modeling that's been done on that showed that if we'd had the last election using that, the Liberals would have gained even more seats at the expense of other parties. So I'm going to close by saying I have faith in this parliamentary committee. I think they've been doing some great work. I think they're going to come up with some sensible recommendations by December. But they need to hear from you. And so they're coming to Victoria next Tuesday. They will be at the Harbour Towers Hotel. And Fair Vote Canada and many others are hosting a rally at Quadra Park, which is just opposite the Covo on Belleville. And we invite you to come to that rally. Nathan Cullen will be speaking, Elizabeth May, Guy Donsey, David Murner, who ran as a Liberal candidate, and Tony Hodgson from the BC, BC, what is it? Fair Voting BC. So you can get a lot of information from them. And then there's an open mic starting at about seven-thirty, and they want to hear from you. Just two minutes. Just speak from your heart about, it can be what you don't like about the current system, what you might like, but it's a crucial opportunity for them to hear directly from you. So thank you. Look forward to questions and discussion.
So just before we, you know, wrap up and conclude, and then we'll, of course, open up for some questions. This is, I just wanted to take a little bit of time to just talk about a bill that I introduced in May of this year. Bill C279 is something I introduced because I think, like all members of Parliament who went through that campaign, but also the legions, volunteers who helped get us there, and even the Canadian public can appreciate that a seventy-eight-day campaign is unnecessary for us to make a choice of who we send to our national Parliament. And the reason why we had such a long campaign is because there actually, there is no limit on how long a campaign can be. There is certainly a minimum. And one of the big issues is that in 2012, there was this little amendment made to the Elections Canada Act which allowed spending limits for political parties to increase for every day they went over thirty-seven days. So they were allowed to increase by a fraction, one thirty-seventh, for every day they went over. So that translated into an extra six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand for each party's national campaign, and additional twenty-seven hundred dollars per day for each local campaign. So to highlight that and put it in perspective, in 2011, the national limit for political parties was twenty-one million dollars. In 2015, with our seventy-eight-day campaign, that ballooned to over fifty-five million dollars. Now, I hope I'm not alone in this, but I see a problem when we allow the influence of money to play a greater role in our politics rather than the voices of ordinary people. Because when you start increasing political financing limits to those huge amounts, well, really, you're giving much more voice to parties which have a wealthier and far more expensive clientele. You're able to buy more TV ads, more radio ads, just really flood the newspapers with your message, and smaller political parties simply cannot compete on that kind of a playing field. There's also the cost to the taxpayer. Because when Elections Canada had to prepare for a seventy-eight-day campaign, taxpayers were on the hook for four-hundred-and-forty-three million dollars. So we're talking nearly half a billion dollars to run last year's election. And that was a hundred-and-fifty million more than the 2011 campaign. So I proposed a bill which would limit the length of election between thirty-six and forty-six days. We had to put in that range of dates so that governments would not be hampered by when a holiday would fall. It gives them a range to sort of put the election date outside a holiday and basically, you know, levels the playing field. Because I think that when we talk about reforming our electoral system, it's not just about how we send members to Parliament, but also how we conduct our elections. So as we just wrap up here, you know, Terry, I think, gave a great sort of overview, and Randall, of some of the alternatives that exist. But I know that listening to this in the space of an hour can seem a little bit overwhelming. But there are some fantastic pamphlets on the desk out there which really do give a much more in-depth explanation of the alternatives that exist. And really, our main goal here is to come up with a system where every vote is equal, where every Canadian can go to the poll and be unafraid, unmotivated by any other factor except by the choice they want, and actually see that diversity reflected in our national Parliament, to see more compromise, more collaboration, more cooperation between our political parties. Because ultimately, I think that's going to lead to much better politics, much more inclusive politics, where the wonderful and rich diversity of this country is truly represented in its demographics, its regions, and all of its communities. So you have had quite an influence, quite a town hall here today to sort of look at. We encourage you to fill out those surveys that you've got so that Randall and I can have that feedback. But with that, I would certainly like to open it up to any questions you may have, and I'll take hands where I can see them.
First of all, I just want to acknowledge the presence of people here who are age forty and younger. Not a lot of you, and that kind of disturbs me. I don't know what the attendance is at the other events, but, you know, perhaps some Free Day to City or something like that would make it possible for them to participate more. My question, I think probably Terry is the one to address it, but perhaps the other of you two would like to talk to it as well. My question is just regarding those situations where there's a candidate that I prefer, and there's a party platform that I prefer, and those two are not the same, and whether any of these systems address that.
There is actually a system. If you have, there's one system that's been proposed called Mixed Member.
Can you repeat the question, please?
So she wanted to know if there's a difference between the candidate that you like and the party. So say you really like a local candidate as a conservative, a local conservative candidate, because they've just been a fine, outstanding member of Parliament, but maybe you don't agree with the party's platform nationally. There is such a system, it's called a Mixed Member Proportional System. So that honors the system of local representation. So you would be casting two marks on your ballot, one for the local member of Parliament who's representative of a specific geographical area, and with a second mark on your ballot, you can mark the party of your choice or even the list of candidates for each party. So you can settle it in that manner.
What would that second vote?
So that second vote would be the one used to top up the number of seats in Canada's Parliament. So you'd have fewer seats, like we were to stay with three-hundred-and-thirty-eight seats, you would have fewer geographical seats, but there would be a number of them allocated to make sure that the vote was overall proportional to the national results.
MMP is what New Zealand adopted, and so you get two different kinds of MPs, and there was a worry about that. You get district MPs, and you get list MPs. So your second vote goes to top up. If your party didn't get enough seats in districts, some old people off their list will be elected. And there was a concern at the beginning, saying, oh, well, how will that work having two different kinds of MPs? But in practice, it's worked fine. It hasn't turned out to be people's worst nightmare, although there was one neighborhood, because of the list system in Auckland, that had five members of Parliament within four square blocks. Because they were elected off the list and not from a district. But that has been the exception rather than the rule. So you can, you keep, as Alison said, the local district, and then you top that up with list MPs. So if you win a majority of the districts, right, then you've won, right? It doesn't change that. But in any of those circumstances we're talking about, where no one has fifty percent of the vote, it makes it representative of what the votes that people actually cast.
Thank you. And thank you for having this session today. I think it was a great, I learned a great deal from it so far. First of all, I would like to say, by the way, my name is Stan Brigadier, and I'm new to the writing because of the boundary changes in the last election. I would like to suggest that there is no such thing as a wasted vote. Everybody's vote counts, whether it produces a government or not. It lets everybody know where the popularity is. And so I voted for three different parties, at least federally. Not all produce the government, and I never, ever considered that my vote was wasted. I'm going to make three quick points and ask if you would just have a, say a few words about them. One is, the lack of getting a fifty percent has part to play in that is the fact that we have a multi-party system. So that if we only had two parties to vote for, we'd likely get more than fifty percent for one of the candidates. If you have three, the percentage, the chances decrease. Where we have four, five, six renosferous parties, other parties that never will ever get elected to government, that helps to make sure that one individual never gets fifty percent. Could you just play a word or two about how you could perhaps restrict parties, or maybe we shouldn't restrict the numbers, but that's part of the problem. My second point is, you haven't written down any of the correspondence ever seen of a runoff election. And I understand they have that type in France. A runoff election until one candidate gets fifty percent is another option, which I've heard in the past, and it hasn't been addressed here today. And the third point I'd like to make is, no to mandatory voting, no to lowering the age to sixteen. We already have enough people who vote without any knowledge of what they're voting for, and having those two implement it would only increase the ill-informed vote.
Oh, boy. Where do we start with that? I think the issue with the fringe parties is partly, on the positive side, I would say, it's a good thing. We do want to encourage diversity, you know? We don't want to go down to a two-party system like you see south of the border. But there is also a precautionary mechanism that countries with PR use, which is they establish a threshold, like such a party would have to get four percent roughly. So I think that is a way to ensure that only those parties that are serious and have a significant number of votes go forward. I'm going to let Randall speak on the runoff. But on the mandatory voting and note age sixteen, in the hearings that I've been observing, there's been nervousness a bit about mandatory voting. Like, Australia has it, and it's part of their culture, and it works. So I had a sense that the committee is not likely to say, let's go forward with mandatory. But there are creative things like, what about declaring Voting Day a holiday? You know, make it fun, make it a community event. It's a holiday, they're really getting people out. So, and lowering to sixteen, I've heard some passionate young people say, it's about time. We can work, we can marry, we can have kids. Like, why can't we vote?
Okay, so on the question of runoff, ranked ballot is actually a runoff system. It just asks you in advance who you would vote for the next time. So it really does the same thing as the French system. So the French system conducts the election, and no one gets a majority. They vote again the next week. It's very expensive, and turnout fluctuates wildly when you have a second week of voting. Okay. So it fluctuates a lot in terms of turnout when you have to come back. So ranked ballots simply ask you in advance if your candidate doesn't win, who's your second choice? So it actually is a form of the runoff system. The system we have now came out of two-party systems. So when you're questioning about multi-party, it came out of systems where there were only two large parties. And so that is part of the history of First Past the Post. And you're quite right, it doesn't accommodate multi-party competition very well. That's the problem. But I don't see how you can prevent people from having different political ideas. That's just a sign of our diversity now. So we need a system that will reflect that rather than trying to restrict that.
I'd like to speak about Laura's psychology. I heard your comment behind me that teenagers' brains aren't mature. In fact, they're given to impulse, but when a child, a young person, has an opportunity to think ahead and do an analysis, they make very sound judgments. So getting drunk and getting pregnant is one thing, but voting for the prime minister is an entirely different thing. You can do that. And the other thing is, if it's seen as a citizen's responsibility, what everyone does, how you comport yourself as a Canadian or American, you will more likely go out and vote. There's been a scientific American mind this month, voters ecology. How will we get, how will we get the Americans out to vote? The scientific, American and scientific American mind are very concerned that sensible voters will go and vote, not people who are attracted to television stars.
Thank you. I've never used a microphone before. I'm a retired legislative librarian, and I've done quite a bit of research the past twenty years on electoral reform. But I'm not a politician, I'm not a political scientist. But I can offer you some information as a librarian. Your reference to Fair Vote, if we just talk about it. There, okay. To Fair Vote as one resource, the website for the committee, which has the unfortunate acronym of E R R E. Who ever thought that was a compromise for a bit of wildism? I don't know. But if you look up the Special Committee on Electoral Reform, there are news releases, there are updates on what they're doing, and there are links to the Library of Parliament orientation. Two things which cannot possibly be talked about here in such a short time are excellent. And they have charts, and it's really an obligation for those who are considering this to be there. And it's also one of the problems, is there's a huge education need before people decide this. So that's one thing I wanted to ask about. And the second thing was, Terry, get another remote. If you and your husband only have one, tell me why. The other thing is, voting is just one of the many factors in electoral reform. There are so many other factors to be considered. And I'm glad you pulled the dialogue, but there needs to be so much done in such a short period. I'm very concerned that you can engage Canadians, who need to be engaged in this topic. And my own personal, what would I say, you know, topic that I would like to pursue is all Canadians have a right to vote regardless of residency.
I don't think I'll need a mic, I don't usually, but this is the second such presentation I've been to, although one ensued last week. And candidly, I think that both presentations are letting the electorate down. There hasn't been a nice, simple explanation solely of the various systems that there are. You're not getting out to your public? Politicians generally don't get out to their public, that's why we don't like the first past the post system. We're cynical about it. And candidly, these two meetings haven't helped a bit. The only way any of us are gonna learn is to pick up some of those pamphlets from Fair Voting Canada. But even they are terribly biased, as was the one last week. Thanks.
Well, I appreciate that comment. You know, we, we only have an hour and a half for today, and...
Straight on explanation?
Yep.
Not on politics?
But as, as our librarian friend here indicated, the resources available on the Electoral Reform Committee's website are so vast, and the explanation, we could devote an hour and a half to just one system today. And, and I think, like, what we're trying to impart to the, to the communities, first of all, that this process is going on, second of all, how important it is, but thirdly, that there are additional resources. This is really about getting the word out. And, and I will say that there are three different attempts to make Canadians aware of this. Individual members of parliament, like Randall and I are doing this, the Electoral Reform Committee of the House of Commons is doing this, but we also have the Minister of Democratic Institutions. So there are three different attempts by the various levels that parliament has that are trying to do this. I am going to be substituting for one of my colleagues on the Special Committee on Electoral Reform, E R R E, unfortunate acronym, but I'm gonna be travelling with that committee to the Atlantic provinces in the first week of October, so it's gonna be reaching all four provincial capitals. And, and those sessions, I've looked at the minutes of previous meetings, they have sometimes gone on for seven or eight hours because they literally don't stop until everyone's had their turn. So it's a multifaceted process. I'm, I'm sorry, today may not have lived up to, to what you wanted, but I want you to know that as a member of parliament, for my specific area, I am always there for follow-up, my door is always open, and whether it's a phone call, an email, or a letter, myself or my staff would be more than happy to follow up with any kind of resources, because I have that direct link to the Library of Parliament. So, you know, we can certainly try and follow up and try and satisfy the concerns that you've illustrated today. I would welcome some further correspondence for you, maybe we could exchange contact information, I can do that for you.
Footnote. There is, everybody can give feedback. There's an electronic consultation website. The deadline is February, it's Friday, October the 7th. I've only been there, it started my response. So there's an education portion, and then you can go in, and then you can save what you've only responded to, come out, do some research, and we're back. But it's, they really want to engage in, in many different levels, people who can do theirs own work.
And what you're a little... If you go to, is it the E R R E committee website? Yes, okay. Go to the news release of September the 21st.
If you just Google it, it's right there online, the Electoral Reform Committee, and the link is right there. It's easy enough to find. So, a couple of things. I think, as we experienced, although 2015 was an anomaly, I think, the apathy of people wanting to get involved or even being informed that these discussions are even taking place. And I think Ipsos Re just released a poll last week where less than three percent of Canadians are actually fully engaged in what is going on with electoral reform. People have lives, the Royals are here, the PM is here today, we've got the PGA going up at Langford. It's a very busy day, and people have families, and that's where they are, and that's where they're vested. So it's very difficult, as we know, to educate and inform people, and unless you've really got a real passion about it, you're not here, unfortunately. That is why I believe, and I liked your idea, Terry, with respect to making voting day a holiday, because I truly believe that's one of the only ways that we are going to get everybody involved, or even have the opportunity to get involved, because they can actually make time for it. It's not like they have to leave work for a couple of hours, which I know legally everybody has the opportunity to do. But until we go to some, I'm gonna say radical idea like that, I don't think people are going to get engaged. I will express my disappointment today with Terry, your speech, and I felt it very biased, very biased, and I don't, you know, good information, but regardless of what system that people choose or want to choose to represent them, I think everybody deserves the opportunity to say so and have a say. And that is where I think a referendum does come in, though. Because people are not informed. It's our opportunity to continue to inform and allow people to be informed. But I don't think we should be pushing one or the other. I think we need to try educating, and your personal views and experiences are great, but it leans people or, you know, tends to direct people one way or the other, and I don't think that's what today was about. I also have a concern about this government, I'm gonna say sole sourcing the decision. Because what I have experienced in the last ten months since the election is, they talk, but they don't walk the talk. They do a lot of consultation, but they do have, as Randall and Alastair have said, a majority government. And they have made a commitment, apparently we gave them the authority to change the voting system, but they've never, ever told us how they plan on doing that. But out of three hundred and thirty, what is it, eight seats, they have a hundred and eighty-four. They have the majority vote, they can do whatever they want without us even having a say. And while they are doing the three things that you say with Mr. Moncive, going out with the Electoral Reform Committee, and, and thank you to Alastair and, and Randall for hosting us today, giving us the opportunity, I think it is all just dressing. And it's my own personal opinion. I hope not, but I hope that people will take the opportunity to somehow get engaged and have their, have their say. Next Tuesday is an opportunity, I know I will be there, I will also be going on the website. But I hope that at the very least Canadians will get the opportunity for democratic reform, and that is to have a say, and that is a referendum.
If I could just say one thing, like, I appreciate your comments, Sherry, and certainly during the committee series, there's been a lot of feedback on the referendum idea. One of the concerns that I've had, and some of my colleagues have had with the referendum, is that sometimes massive campaigns of misinformation can be run. And when Canadians, or any other voter for that matter, is presented with all of these competing campaigns for one way or against, Canadians or voters tend to remain with the status quo, because they know that system, they feel comfortable with it. My colleague Nathan Cullen, you know, brought forward a proposal that maybe we should try a new system out for a couple of times, and then have a referendum, so that at least Canadians can make an informed choice. And perhaps that's somehow the compromise that we have to arrive at, because then Canadians will have had the direct experience of our old system versus the new system, and there's no reason why you can't build a sunset clause into the new voting system that instructs any future government to hold a referendum and get Canadians feedback on that. So perhaps that's a compromise we have to arrive at. The committee will have to see whether that's included in their report, for sure. I gotta get some...
Yeah, you know, to be honest, as I sat there listening to all of the committee hearings, I too was thinking, okay, I know I'm very, very concerned about how a referendum could be manipulated, but I was taken seriously the points of view that were being raised, and I guess what's convinced me are a number of things. One, is that it is a question of basic human rights, you know? We've only had three national referenda in Canada's history, and women, the issue of women, for example, was not put to a referendum. Thank God, because if it hadn't, you probably still wouldn't have the vote. So that's number one. Number two, I was curious to know if it's a constitutional matter, well, then maybe, maybe we do need to, to look at a referendum. It is not. I heard witness after witness saying, unless we change provincial boundaries, it's not a constitutional matter. We have a long history that I cited of those thirteen studies that have been done. We have the results of the last election, you know, where two-thirds of the people chose parties that were very explicit about campaigning on the basis of wanting to make every vote count. I'm just, we'll take a look at the electoral reform system. And I think the other thing is, because I've had the struggle to get my head around, it is incredibly complex, and just to take out, you know, in a referendum, would you like M N P, would you like S D P? People would just say, forget it, just I'll stick with what I've got, you know? And I believe that, you know, on a matter like this, we need to trust our representatives to put their heads together, to solicit what feedback they can, and to do their job, and to recommend what makes sense, you know? And that we need to experience real change before we pass judgment.
I believe that electoral reform is a sincere desire by Canadians, of goodwill to give every Canadian a voice. However, I'm really concerned, because there is a Trojan horse which has been alluded to, which is ranked balloting. And this is the system that is favored by our Prime Minister. Ranked balloting, according to threehundredeighty.com, which is a polling system, non-partisan as far as I can tell, that today if there was an election under first past the polls, the Liberals would get two hundred and fifty seats. Under ranked balloting, they would get two hundred and seventy-three seats. I am really concerned that under electoral reform, this could come in. And as has been stated, the government does not have to listen to the committee. The only thing the government has to listen to is our vote. And that is the primary reason I'm concerned about getting this taken to the people to vote, is because frankly, with that much of invested interest, I don't trust the government. And I think that we, the people, need to have a say. One of the purposes of electoral reform is to get away from, for example, strategic voting. If ranked balloting went in, you would force Conservative supporters and NDP supporters, for example, to vote together to get rid of the Liberals. Because study after study after study has shown that ranked balloting favors the centrist party. So, again, as our friends from Fairvote have stated, they don't support ranked balloting, and I hope nobody here supports it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the, one of the problems is that the complexities of the proportional system are being downplayed. There's obviously nervousness about whether, how they work and whether you can get it across. And so you think, you see things like single transg-level vote made easy. It ain't easy, and this doesn't make it easy. And people are going to be left wondering, what on earth is this stuff? You know, it's, it's almost like, on the one side, it's easy, and the other side, the alternative vote is a crock. So you've got this extremity of, of view, and I don't think it is, it is working very well. I think a huge effort should be made to make these methods clear. And, you know, it's a very difficult job, and I don't think it's being done successfully yet to get these across. Because they, they create all kinds of strangeness, to be honest. You have to increase the number of seats, you have to do this, you have to do this. I mean, it's, it's a mechanic's nightmare what actually has to be done to get to this point. So I think the propaganda needs to be a little less biased, like the fair vote stuff against the alternative vote, which is, you know, there are some advantages to that, and simple and whatever, and there's some dispute as to whether it does advantage the centre party. So, you know, a little more fairness and a little more realisation, I think, that this is complex, and it takes more than saying it's easy to make it easy. Thank you.
And we did say that we were gonna end at three thirty today, so may I just, for our questions?
I'm from, and I was at the one last meeting today. So what I wanted to say was that I, I am a poly-sik person, so I confess I'm a bit, I'm a bit of a nerd when it comes to this kind of stuff. I actually like it, and I, and I see the value of it, and I see the value of making some changes to our, to our system of government, because frankly, it's not working right now. Too many people are frustrated, there's too much very negative reaction when it comes to voting in parliament, and seeing how distorted the positions are when they're being spoken in, and the rhetoric that's being used, it tears people apart, it brings them together. So I want some changes. And so I, I, I do like proportional reform, I don't care what kind it is, so on, it's reported true proportional, and I just think it's time that we just make a change. And with the E R R E going forward the way it is, they've done a lot of homework, and to be frank, if they come up with a system that is truly proportional, I would go with whatever they say, because at that point, I think it would be significantly better than the system we have now. Thank you.
I, I think I can forego a break as well, unfortunately. I'd like to make three quick points. I don't think I'm providing a false presentation, maybe I'm just a little thick. Was, I apologize for being a little late, was there a discussion also on something other than PR? Was there somebody else putting forth and advocating for something other than PR?
Yes. That was Alastair's first part on the strengths...
So first past the post actually got a, this is why we should go first?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I outlined the strengths of the system.
That is nonsense. There's been no, there's been no discussion on benefits or...
No, there's no...
He has little four points. He, he doesn't believe in...
But I did outline the strengths of the system.
So, so, and the reason I agree with that is because I certainly heard the PR proposal, and, and the elements of debate is means you have to have both points, or you're not having a debate, you're just having propaganda. And, and unfortunately, that destroys any credibility or legitimacy to something like that. The second point I'd make is, is the first past the post, we, we've been around for a hundred and fifty years, we've got a pretty decent country, really, most people would say, and we've got it through first past the post. No, I'm not advocating necessarily, but first past the post at one time was, was, by some way, was touted as the best system in the world to keep the fringe lunatics from gaining enough power to form government. And, and I'm gonna point out that I'm, I'm an old bugger, and I can remember twice when we got rhinocerous parties' people actually elected, and not disparaging the NDP, but in the previous election, we got one young lady in Quebec elected that was a unilingual anglican down in Vegas during the time of the election. So I, I would suggest that an election is important enough to, to make sure that we, we have a broad-based, a broad-based segment of society voting. Pick your percentages, whether you want to make it mandatory or not, doesn't really matter, but certainly, we should be, we should have a way to cast aside those parties that cannot articulate and develop policies that reach a broad enough perspective that they can get elected. The third point I would like to make is, is something that scares me silly. We are in a democracy. We are actually giving legitimacy during this discussion to countenance an idea of a government that was voted in on thirty-nine point five percent of the popular vote, and the previous government, the Harper government, was voted in on thirty-nine point six-two, so point one more. We are seriously discussing in a democracy whether one government voted in for one term could change the way we vote without taking it to the people. If that doesn't scare everybody in this room silly, it should, it must. That is Zimbabwe, that is Mugabe, that is one step away from somebody declaring himself president for life, because he could get a voting system in that will ensure it.
Well, our constitution actually ensures that parliament has to go back to the people every five years.
Right, well, if he, if he can fillet him away, then go put him in power. I mean, Zimbabwe has...
Okay, so just in the interest of time, just one more question.
I do want to change the voting system, because if half the people in this country are not represented by somebody who represents their group of parliament, we do not have a representative democracy. That's why I want to change the system. That's why I want to change the system.
Okay, um, so, I don't, okay, one more, it's, it's, it's all just past 3:30.
I'd like to say that I admire the people that even took this meeting, I think they've done it grand and all, maybe a few points, not all necessarily, what we wanted to hear, not necessarily, but we don't know anything about. I mean, there's just so many angles to this sort of thing, that it's impossible for even just three people to take it over, but we've given, didn't give it a lot to think about. I'm almost 90, so I know what I'm talking about. Everybody has an opinion. I ask that everybody study it and make their own conclusions, and make them honestly with themselves. Not parties, not politicians, not even your own family, but your own self, and you feel in your own way. And thank you, Ian.
Thank you very much. This is not the beginning or the end of the process, but I think that's a great comment to end on. It's incumbent on every citizen of this country to take that responsibility, become involved, and find out what the systems are. Uh, so, I will... Absolutely, you can send it by fax or an email attachment, no problem. Okay, so really, I thank you all for, for participating today. I really appreciate the feedback that you, that you're submitting to us, both in your comments and in your papers, and please do, feel free to send us further comments either by email or letter, so thank you very much.